Item number one is the appropriation of onetime revenues from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement. And item number two is the Residential Organized Waste Strategies Report. And we will start our meeting, as we do most of our meetings, with citizen's right to speak and on public comment on agenda items. So if you'd like to speak on an item, when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name, and please give us an address, and if you'd spell your last name, we'll try to get it all correct in the record. And you will have three minutes for your presentation to council. And these are for items that are on the agenda. So our first speaker looks like is Montana Stevenson and Rob Robinson on deck.
Can you hear me?
And I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and start the timer buttons after the speakers been able to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Montana Stevenson, and I'm a Wheat Ridge resident at 3655 Harlan Street. I'm also a volunteer with the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee and a volunteer on the leadership team of the Panorama Park Sustainable Neighborhood. And I'm here today to talk on the second agenda item, the Residential Organized Waste Strategies topic. I moved to Wheat Ridge in 2019 from Denver, and part of the reason for moving here was to live somewhere with a bit more green space and quieter streets. And for the most part, I've really enjoyed this community, and I've spent time volunteering to support the community here and build community here. But I've found the waste management system to be very annoying, and I particularly am frustrated by the number of trash trucks that I have on my street multiple days a week. Sometimes when I'm taking a walk around my neighborhood, I feel like I'm being stalked by a trash truck because they're making their rounds to every fifth or eighth or 10th house, which just seems really inefficient. Besides the noise, I also think about, you know, air pollution that I'm breathing while walking around. And, you know, most of the trucks, it seems, are clearly diesel-powered. They're still, you know, belching large puffs of exhaust. I'm also about to have a child, and so traffic and road safety are definitely more on my mind these days, especially when, you know, a lot of streets in Wheat Ridge don't have sidewalks, which I don't necessarily mind, but it does feel more dangerous when there's more large vehicles using the streets. And then, aside from nuisance and safety issues, another source of frustration for me is the pricing. I've had my hauler company raise the rates since I first signed up, and I'm not getting any different or better service. If I want to pay less, my option seems to be to switch haulers, but I've talked to some of my neighbors, and it doesn't seem like any of them have cheaper rates. I've also looked at rates for services in, like, Arvada, and while I'm paying about $28 a month for trash recycling, they're advertising that it's going to cost a maximum of $20 a month for basically the same service provided by their city-preferred hauler. So that's $100 on an annual basis difference. And then the last thing is I'm also frustrated by the limited services haulers provide here. I only get biweekly recycling pickup, even though I have more trash than recycling, I mean, I have more recycling than trash items. They also don't offer compost or volume-based services where, like, if I use less trash, I could pay less. So I'd really like to see the city take some steps to address the nuisance of all the trash trucks, improve the pricing and services available, and also increase the landfill diversion rate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rob Robinson, and Guy Namiach on deck.
Good evening. My name's Rob Robinson. I live in District Three at Four Hillside Drive. I've lived in Wheat Ridge since 2007. I also am a member of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, and I'm here to support the idea of a single hauler for Wheat Ridge. I'm doing it here, in this case, for me personally. For me personally, the most important thing about having a single hauler, waste and recycling company, or contract, or whatever you might decide, is the reductions in greenhouse gases and the possible improvement in our recycling rate, which is abysmal. So it also seems that it's a time, a time is right for this kind of move, as three other cities amongst our neighborhoods, they're neighbors to this community, have also recently gone to single haulers. And so I would like to see Wheat Ridge to follow suit with those communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Guy Namiach.
3650 Ward Road. UPS, FedEx, DHL, and Amazon. Who will Wheat Ridge choose as their single package delivery company? All those trucks throughout the day, every day, just imagine the damage to our roads and noise pollution, seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., the horror. Some deliver commercially and some drive all the way to my house for a simple foam filter for my espresso machine. The gallons of fuel, the tires. And of course, we have so many restaurant delivery guys running stop signs, getting into your home before those dumplings get cold. Will it be Grubhub we choose as our exclusive food delivery company? How about the landscapers? All the school buses from so many schools, every day, twice a day? What about one ambulance company? What about one vaccine provider? This way, we all have the same microchip. Exclusivity breeds bad service. It's constant firing and hiring of waste haulers. Imagine now, all those calls coming to City Hall. Ken, the guy didn't put the can on top of my driveway. Ally, what happened? They never showed up today. Chief, that truck flew down my street 100 miles an hour. I can imagine all those calls coming to City Hall. The sustainable groups tried to get our neighborhood, our neighborhood, to use a single hauler and failed. I'm not impressed with the stats. People want to be able to choose who they want to use. It's why we have so many vendors of all kinds. It's why Colorado is a choice state when it comes to education, and it's why Denver has cut back on their service, not able to collect from everyone. In fact, Denver has had more than 8,000 missed trash collection complaints received in the last six weeks. I read the agenda packet, and I see the motive. It's pretty one-sided, but I get it. But what I'm urging you is not to choose an exclusive, but rather an official status. New families will choose whoever is the official vendor for the city, and if it takes five years, they'll eventually have the majority using that single hauler. Forcing people like an HOA never works. In fact, it works against you. People won't remember your good intention, just simply another way of removing choice from our citizens. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. That's all the people that I have signed up to speak, but if you didn't get signed up or would like to speak, you may have an opportunity right now. If you'd like to come to the podium, please. That's okay. Just introduce yourself and give us your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thanks. My name is April Nowak. My address is 2955 Ingles Street, and I'm here to represent Sustainable Wheat Ridge, rather than myself personally. So we submitted a letter of support to your package, to your packet tonight, so I'm just going to share some of that for the record. Sustainable Wheat Ridge has researched the issue of solid waste and recycling for years. Our letter highlights our findings and possible solutions for City Council to consider. We encourage you to review our letter in its entirety. It is now time for the city to consider a citywide policy that addresses the following issues by taking steps that may include, but are not limited to, updating the business license requirements for waste haulers, updating city code to address quality of collection bins, and promoting waste diversion from landfills, considering a city-negotiated waste hauling contract. Importantly, we believe implementing these steps will reduce truck traffic, which in turn will reduce noise pollution, air pollution, and wear and tear on the roads, improving pedestrian safety and overall neighborhood livability, while also reducing road maintenance costs, reduce the costs, reducing the cost to residents of waste hauling services, and improving the quality of waste hauling services. We feel that some steps can also protect the local environment, like water quality in the Clear Creek, and increase the rates of waste diversion from landfills, as well as minimize obstruction of pedestrian walkways on primary corridors. An improved waste collection and management approach by the City of Wheat Ridge will reduce costs to residents, and residents will have more options, not less. Colorado statutes protect the right of residents to choose their hauler, and so that would be something that would be in any of these recommendations that the city moves forward with. Our letter includes how the current conditions for waste management impact the quality of life, cost to city residents, and environmental stewardship and protection. We understand resident engagement and education are critical, and we look forward to working with the city on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed who would like to speak on this item? Or I'll ask the clerk, do we have anyone online? If you're online and would like to speak on this, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and we'll bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we have Megan Snow. All right, Megan Snow. Megan, now the hand up.
Okay, Megan Snow, we'd like to bring you into the meeting. If you'd please give us your first name and your last name, and please spell your last name, and give us an address for the record. We will, you'll have three minutes to speak to the council.
Good evening. It's actually Jenny Snell. You'd think after two years I'd remember to change my name when you share a Zoom account. Jenny Snell, 7020 West 35th Avenue, District One. I'm here tonight to actually speak on Agenda Item Number One. Good evening, Mayor Starker and council members. I'm here this evening as a representative of the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team. We're an outside agency who works within Wheat Ridge to support safe walking and biking for all community members through outreach, education, and connection. The ADATs have a great history of working with the city in an advisory capacity on several bicycle and pedestrian safety projects, including the Pier Street Bike Lane. We are thankful for our partnership with the city and applaud the City Council for their support of making Wheat Ridge safer for walking and biking. We would like to offer our comments on the $10 million in unbudgeted general funds that we understand are available to the city. We believe a top priority for these funds ought to be completing a safe biking and walking connection along the Wadsworth corridor by extending a multi-use path at least to 32nd and Wadsworth. We regularly see pedestrians struggling to navigate the stretch between 35th and 32nd along the west, along the side of the road, and the worn trails or footprints in the snow are evidence of the need for this connection. Given the magnitude of this existing Wadsworth project that's currently going on and the potential impact it will have for improving safe active transportation on the corridor, not filling in this gap would be a major missed opportunity to connect more neighborhoods to this central corridor of the city. This path could provide connectivity to City Hall, Crown Hill Park, the Lutheran Campus, and businesses along Wadsworth, just to name a few. The ADATs are in favor of this plan and ask that it be considered, along with other top priority projects within the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. We support efforts to ensure our city is safe, connected, and accessible to all who walk, bike, and roll in Wheat Ridge. The ADATs are happy to be partners and advisors on this and hope for further dialogue as these projects take shape. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me go back to the clerk and see if we have anyone else with their hand up.
No, Mr. Mayor, I've got this. Mark Westburg, do you have your hand up to make a comment?
I do.
Okay, then we'll recognize Mr. Westburg if you'd give us your name and address.
Yeah, so for the next three minutes, I'm just a Wheat Ridge citizen who lives very close to City Hall. I live in a small subdivision, and our HOA pays for our trash service. We have a single trash hauler that drives up at Denner Street. So we have trash trucks on our street on Thursday mornings. That's it. One day a week, one trash truck, and then on alternate weeks, a recycled truck. I've lived also in Wheat Ridge on a street that didn't have that service and had multiple trash trucks driving by, and it is, it is a great change to be at a place where there's only one trash truck driving by every week. So I just wanted to voice that as a Wheat Ridge citizen who actually is experiencing the single hauler route and say that I'm really in favor of that becoming a city-wide thing.
Thank you. And just, Mark, for the record, may I have your address?
Oh, yes, sir. I do apologize. 3320 Yukon Court.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're getting some good response. Want our hands up? I'll go one more time. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone else with their hand up that'd like to speak on either item on our study session?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any more hands.
Then we want to thank everyone who came to speak to us. We appreciate your coming. We will move into our Agenda Item Number One, which is the appropriation of onetime revenues from the American Rescue Plan and the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement. Mr. Cough.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we talk about trash, we're going to talk about money. I like that much better, don't you?
Particularly when you're getting it instead of giving it out.
And the reason for the bigger table set up this evening is because we have a lot of staff with us this evening. So thank you, staff, for setting the tables up for me. We'll get started, though. Inside joke? Corey got it. Corey is the first one here. Well, we're happy to, we're thrilled to be here, actually, tonight. It's a very unusual situation we're in, and I think a lot of people, a lot of cities across the country, but the city has or will receive millions of dollars in nonrecurring or onetime revenues in the next couple of years. And in the finance world, they define, they define nonrecurring as revenues or gains that have arisen from infrequent events that are not expected to continue in the future. And we have several situations for that definition that we will speak to you about tonight. But it's prudent for the city to really take a strategic approach in allocating these funds to ensure that they're leveraged appropriately. You got slides? Great, thanks, Ally. So the city is receiving historic and transformative funding from the federal government to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've already received $2.5 million in CARES Act funding in 2020 to respond to the immediate financial impacts of the pandemic, and have received half of the 7.9 million in ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act. In 2021, we'll receive the other half this year to address the more strategic and long-term needs of the community. In addition, the community is currently experiencing an unprecedented level of residential and commercial development. Mr. Johnson can speak to that if you have more questions. But that development is substantially increasing our revenues that we receive from development-related revenues, such as building use tax and building permit fees. Just as an example, we're projecting approximately $8 million that we're going to be receiving from the SCL Lutheran Hospital project, and that's something we're not going to see on an annual basis. Once the project's done, we won't see that on an annual basis. And then finally, one other onetime revenue that we're receiving, or we have received, we received it in December of last year, is the Long Peak Metropolitan District reimbursement to the city in the amount of $9.8 million. That was a loan that the city loaned to the project so that we could finish the Hook Ramp project off I-70 into the Clear Creek Crossing project. These funds were reimbursed, and they are unrestricted at this point, so they can be spent at the discretion of City Council.
Okay, so just thinking about, just a quick summary, really, looking back to 2020, which seems so long ago now, where we received that 2.46 million. We're very grateful to Jefferson County for sharing their CARES money with us. So just to remind you all what we, what we actually spent those funds on. And as, as the city manager said, this was, you know, really designed to respond to the immediate needs of the pandemic, and it was incredibly helpful to do that. So the chart on the screen here summarizes how that funding was spent, as we reported to the federal government through Jefferson County. So the largest amount, about $850,000, was support to small businesses, and as you recall, that there were, I think, three rounds of grant funding that we did directly to businesses. And then additional money was granted through local works, helped us with a program for business reopening. So if you remember, when people, when we first came out of lockdown, there were a lot of expenses related to the initial restrictions, capacity, paper plates, paper menus, like all of those things. We reported about $750,000 in personnel. If you, you might remember, later in 2020, the Treasury ruled that public safety payroll was an eligible expense of CARES money. And so we put about 3/4 of a million into, quote unquote, "that bucket." We spent about $450,000 on PPE sanitation programs. So for example, we do additional cleanings at our buildings, especially in court, actually, during sessions in court. And we also do a lot of vehicle sterilizations that weren't happening prior to COVID, so that money went there. We, we also spent money in that bucket on facility improvements. So we improved our HVAC, Plexiglas, all kinds of things designed to help protect stuff in the public. We recouped over $200,000 in payroll for medical, COVID-related medical leave. So anytime somebody couldn't work, but we paid them, we were able to recoup that. And then finally, we spent money on teleworking, so laptops, monitors, these virtual platforms. So all in all, this funding really helped us, again, respond to the immediate needs of the pandemic in 2020. So now let's talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act. Again, as the city manager said, 7.9 million directly to Wheat Ridge, meaning it didn't come through Jefferson County. We're a non-entitlement unit of government, meaning we're less than 50,000 people. We applied to DOLA for our allocation. We received 50% last June. We'll receive the next 50% this coming June. And this funding is designed to further respond to the pandemic by supporting the community through public health and economic impacts, maintaining vital services amid declining revenues, build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. So a lot to consider there. Here's the eligible sort of timeline for funding. Expenditures are eligible if they occur on or off to March 3rd of 2021. The funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and fully expended by the end of 2026. Okay, so those are the sort of the timing milestones of ARPA. You've, I think you've heard us talk about this before. We've actually retained the services of our auditor, Clifton Lawson Allen. Incidentally, that's who we worked with, that's who Jefferson County hired to help us with CARES, the CARES reporting. They know a lot about this. So we've actually retained those services to help us with ARPA and have been talking to them now for, gosh, quite a few months on how to best help the city understand the pages and pages in the bill and then the Treasury's guidance around it. And we did all that, and then the Treasury issued its final rule this January, a few weeks ago, and frankly, made it a whole lot easier for Wheat Ridge. So I want to set the stage a little bit, because we will further dig into the eligible uses of the funding, but there's a provision in the final rule that really affects us. And that is, the final rule allows each government a standard allowance of $10 million in the, quote unquote, "lost revenue" bucket. So for non-entitlement units of government like us, that's more than our entire allocation. So they're really telling Wheat Ridge, and I should say, the lost revenue bucket is the most flexible use of the funds. In lost revenue, we have the discretion to spend that money on almost any government service. You can't spend it on debt, and you can't spend it on pension. But, and there's, you know, a long list, but for the most part, any typical government service, payroll, vehicles, capital projects, are considered eligible under lost revenue. Excuse me. So our auditors have encouraged us to actually say yes. Take the standard allowance of the $10 million, report it to the federal government as payroll. And so we will do that for both the half in 2021 and the half in 2022. But then our proposal this evening that we have for you indeed spends the funding in alignment with the categories and according to the timeline as listed in ARPA. Does that make sense? So we'll just touch briefly on the sort of eligible uses of ARPA, at least, especially the ones that we plan on proposing to you this evening. So the first is responding to the public health and economic impacts of the pandemic, so mitigation and prevention. Behavioral healthcare is included in that bucket, and preventing and responding to violence. Water and sewer infrastructure is specifically called out. And then, as I mentioned, any government service under the lost revenue provision. Responding to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic, and some of the categories include assistance to households. So tonight, you're going to hear from us around homelessness in particular, affordable housing and food insecurity. And then assistance to nonprofits. And the way ARPA defines that is a nonprofit whose revenues have declined as a result of the pandemic, or whose demand for services has increased as a result of the pandemic. And there are some additional eligible uses in ARPA that I haven't covered specifically, and we won't be covering specifically this evening, but I'll spell them out here. That includes aid to small businesses and impacted industries. They particularly call out hospitality as an impacted industry. Increasing public sector capacity, and they define that as either sort of rehiring staff or positions, filling positions that were perhaps laid off or put on hold through the pandemic, or bolstering public safety and other emergency services. Premium pay for employees is not something you're going to see on a recommendation tonight, but that's spelled out. So that's premium pay for employees who were specifically at risk during the pandemic because they performed essential work in person. And another category is broadband infrastructure. And I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Great, thanks, Ally. So Ally summarized a majority of the eligible spending categories that are listed in ARPA. And as she mentioned, Wheat Ridge has a lot of flexibility in how we can allocate these funds, but staff is recommending this evening that City Council still focus on the original intent of ARPA, which includes funding those areas that will support families and individuals struggling with the public health and economic impacts of the pandemic, funding programs to address the increase in crime and violence, and funding public improvement projects that benefit families and individuals. We really hope that we provided a kind of well-rounded package of investments in our community that are not only helping people who struggled during COVID, but also investing in our community for our long-term stability. And we got the pie chart up here. You can see that? Good. I was worried about those colors I put on there. But, so our recommendation this evening, and we'll get into these in a little more detail in a bit, but 30% of the funding of the 7.9 to homelessness and housing initiatives, 24% to park and trail improvements, 21% to floodplain project, which is essentially, it's a public safety project for some of our residents, 9% to preventing and responding to violence, 8% to COVID-19 mitigation and prevention, 6% to behavioral and mental healthcare, and 2% to food insecurity and other services to low-income households. So the next slide shows this broken down a little bit further, and again, we'll get into this even more, but this is a little broader categories. So in the category of COVID mitigation and prevention, a good chunk of this we've already spent, or we budgeted, we spent a portion of this in 2021, and a portion of this is budgeted this year, but it was for the testing and vaccine programs, sanitation, technology, et cetera. Those are direct expenses that were related to the COVID pandemic. Those are direct expenses that were related to the COVID, for COVID pandemic last couple years. Assistance to households, homelessness and housing initiatives, as I mentioned, about 2.3 to that. Food insecurity and assistance to low-income populations, including a partnership with Community Table for, to provide rent and utility assistance, food assistance and other needs to our Wheat Ridge residents, 146,000. Behavioral healthcare, this is in partnership with Jefferson Center to provide a clinician in, at Wheat Ridge High School and also to fund their community prevention and engagement program, 481,000 for those programs. Preventing and responding to violence, the telephone reporting unit, which the chief and his staff mentioned, discussed with you a few weeks ago. And then also some other victim services programs, which we'll speak about, speak to just over 753,000. Lost revenue category, some parks and recreation unfunded capital projects that we've had difficulty times finding other revenue sources for those funding sources, 1.9 million. And then some water infrastructure floodplain projects, one project actually, the Lena Galt Sims Overbank Floodplain Project of 1.6 million dollars. So those, that totals the 7, 7.9 million. And I'll turn it back to Ally to talk about the COVID-19 mitigation and prevention expenses.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Goff. And I'll be very, very brief on this. Again, as the city manager mentioned, you, this is money that's already been, was spent in 2021, you appropriated for 2022. And just a little bit of funding to continue a small PPE purchase. We don't know what's coming with the pandemic, so we wanted to hold back a little bit for additional PPE next year. And the continued sanitation programs, some additional potential technology for continued teleworking and providing services remotely for 2023 and 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Excuse me. Moving on to assistance to households and specifically homelessness and housing, as, I think you're all very well aware, and I know Mr. Ong got an email recently, and probably many of you continue to get emails and maybe phone calls about the homelessness issue in Wheat Ridge. And unfortunately, it's continuing and, and I think we're making great progress, but it's not going away. And it's impacting the whole state and the whole metro area. So we are proposing for the city's homeless navigation program that we currently have in place, that we, we fund that at just over $1 million. And that would include funding for our current homeless navigator through 2026, but also a new position, a homeless housing navigator, which we have spoken to you about before, to help Rebecca with, with workload that we have currently. And again, she's making great progress, but her caseload continues to increase and the amount of time it takes to, to work the system to find permanent housing for, for these folks experiencing homelessness is, takes a long, a lot of time. So we really recommend an additional position to help with that. The 1 million also would, would cover the operational expenses of our homeless navigation program again through the year 2026. And then the, the regional housing navigation center, I know we, we brief you on this somewhat over the, over the last several months, but we are in a regional partnership with Jefferson County and the, and the, all the cities in Jefferson County to stand up two navigation centers. The navigation centers would include navigation, wraparound services for people, persons experiencing homelessness. So mental health, workforce training, medical, daycare, anything that somebody really needs to, to keep them housed and keep them employed. We've identified one site for a navigation center and it's currently in Orvada. Our hope is to have a second site potentially more in Lakewood area. We haven't identified a site for that yet. But the navigation center would also include 150 supportive housing units for people experiencing homelessness, and then also 40, 50 short-term beds. We have no shelters, sheltering in Jefferson County at this point. And so this would provide long-term supportive housing and also short-term emergency housing. So this, so we, our portion, it's, it's a somewhat of a huge, well, it's an estimate, projection, guess at this point. They don't have the actual numbers yet, but this program is being managed out of Jefferson County. They do have a developer onboard who is crunching the numbers. They believe our portion of the costs to, the upfront cost to construct the building is about 400,000, I believe. Does that sound right, Ally?
Yep.
It'd be based on our population. We're about 8% population of the other cities in Jefferson County. And then the rest of the money would be for the annual operating expenditures for the navigation center. It's about 100 some thousand.
A year, yeah.
So again, those are, those are pretty high-level estimates at this point. We don't have those exact numbers, but we're proposing that we set aside at least 730,000 so that we can help fund this first navigation center in Orvada. This will not fund a second navigation center. Again, a site has not been located. We don't know what the cost will be for that, for that site. So this would not fund a second navigation center. Next slide, please. Continuing with assistance to households, homelessness and housing. So we, we are proposing to build an even bigger partnership with, with Family Tree, a local nonprofit here in Wheat Ridge that provides a lot of services to not only persons experiencing homelessness, but all kinds of folks who need, who may need services. They have sent us a proposal. It's still something that we have to flush out a little bit, but we just got this in the last week or so. But for $500,000, they can help us with basically housing navigation services primarily for those folks who may be impacted from our extended stay, our hotel licensing ordinance that was originally, that was adopted by city council. So what the $500,000 that they're proposing would do for us, would, they would help provide rent and security, security deposit assistance for anybody that may need it, provide staffing for ongoing case management, anybody that receives a voucher, at least most vouchers for housing, they're required to have ongoing case management also to support them, to keep them in housing. So we don't have those services, those resources in-house to manage that. That would be Family Tree. Somebody like a Family Tree and they can provide those case management services for us. So we recommend half a million to Family Tree to help us with primarily those folks who may be impacted by our hotel ordinance, but they can also provide additional homelessness navigation and housing navigation services also. Then Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, this is a small number, but an important one, $15,000. Metro Denver Homeless Initiative has a flex fund. The American probably answer questions about this, but the city's been contributing about $2,000 a year for the last couple of years to this flex fund. And this flex fund covers, helps people stay housed, prevents people from becoming homeless. And it covers, it can cover rent assistance if, if they're, if they're short on a rent or utility payments, down payments. And in 2020 and 2021, this fund helped five at-risk households in Wheat Ridge avert homelessness at a cost of about $7,500 to keep those five households in their homes. So we're getting more for our money than we've been contributing. So we're, we're recommending that we contribute more. They're on a campaign right now to raise more money. They, I think they're down to $40,000 in this flex fund. And I think Ally said it, it's cost, it's, they spend about 40,000 a month, I believe. It's the whole metro area that they, they use this flex fund for, not just Wheat Ridge, of course. So they're really asking if we can up our contributions. Town of Superior was the first to commit to 15,000. So I think there's a competition out there amongst the cities. Moving on to food insecurity and assistance to low-income households. This is another partnership. A lot of this work takes great partners and we do have a great partner in our Community Table, which is our community food bank and resource. Many, that's not all they do. If, if you haven't been to Community Table or heard from them, she, they would like to come and actually give a presentation to city council, but they do, they provide workforce, training and a lot of other assistance to our residents. But the, as, as you can imagine, the pandemic and the rising cost of food, rent, gas, and utilities and medical assistance has, have placed residents, many of whom never accessed a food pantry before, in a position where they need a great deal of assistance. 18% of Community Table's families live in Wheat Ridge. The city does provide on an annual basis, some funding to Community Table. In this year's budget, we provided them 13,000 through the outside agency program. And we also provided 5,400 to the Feed the Future Backpack Program, which a lot of the food usually comes from the Community Table for those backpacks. But we are proposing, or they're proposing, 146,000. This would be funding through 2025 and this would help fund their client services program. So again, anybody that's in threat of, of becoming homeless because of a missing rent payment or utility payment, households facing eviction, this money would also help with food assistance, bus tickets. I talked to Sandy Martin at Community Table. She said a lot of their clients have had to lose their cars. They can't afford to keep a car anymore, so they're, they're using public transportation. Gas cards, they can provide to some of their families too. As you, as you know, gas is, is very expensive today. So 146,000 to Community Table through the year, over the year, total over the year to 2025. Behavioral healthcare. Again, another area, I think you, you can all realize it's, the demand is increasing in this area, especially during the pandemic, and it probably was increasing even before that. But, you know, concerns of mental health have grown, including concerns of suicidal ideation. In January of 2021, 41% of adults reported symptoms of anxiety and/or depressive disorder. Jefferson Center has seen a significant increase in demand for their services. So one area we would like to, we propose funding is for a behavioral health clinician at the Wheat Ridge High School. A lot of our kids have really struggled through the pandemic and we hope they're back full time, but I think a lot of kids are still trying to figure out what, what the new world is, is for them. Jefferson Center does provide clinicians to over 40 schools, but not at Wheat Ridge High School. The Wheat Ridge High School does not, is not able to fund their portion of it. So we're proposing $81,000, which would provide funding for three years for a clinician. And then Jefferson Center covers the rest. Then the big one, we're proposing 400,000 to Jefferson Center. And this is a four-year program and this is for their community prevention and engagement program. Really covers mental health, first aid, suicide prevention. They have small and large group trainings to help the community cope with trauma and stress and build resiliency. They, the good news about this program is they have the staffing in place. A lot of their, they provided us, Jefferson Center provided me with four or five different options of things we could fund, but they, under the caveat that they may not be able to hire staff to run those programs. They don't have the staff for those, those programs they recommended, but they're having a very difficult time hiring for many of their positions as, as a lot of industries are today. But this program was funded by FEMA. The FEMA money has run out and, but Jefferson Center has kept three staff on for this program. So if council chooses to fund this, the program would, could continue uninterrupted. They wouldn't have to find staff for it. So we have provided funding on an annual basis to Jefferson Center. This year's budget, we have $10,600 for Jefferson Center programming. Okay, I'm almost done, I think. And then we'll turn it over to, yes, Karen, I have one more slide. So the last large, well, not the last large program, the last maybe large program under assistance to families and individuals is preventing and responding to violence. The chief can, can maybe speak to some statistics, but as you all know, you're getting calls and emails about this also. Prop to crime and crime, prop to crime and violence on individuals has increased during the pandemic. True? And continues today, unfortunately. And so we have a couple of areas we would like to propose for some funding. And one you've already heard about, as I mentioned earlier, the PD had requested from city council a few weeks ago, adding two additional civilian employees in the police department to stand up our telephone reporting unit again. That would enable civilian employees to handle a lot of different calls and take reports and free up our, our sworn officers to be out on the street more and to push along our relationship, relationship-based policing philosophy and address crime and violence in the community. So you gave us a head nod on that already. So we propose using about 650,000 of funding through 2026 of, of this ARPA dollars that will, that can help fund this. Then $100,000, we're proposing to fund victim services. We work with several different agencies that we do currently fund, but they're seeing an increase in demand also. There's a lot of individual, again, violence on individuals. And we're proposing $100,000 to, for agencies such as, or the Porchlight Family, or, reminding me, Janice, you're on it? Family, there you go. Porchlight Family Justice Center. We do provide them, we gave them 21,000 this year in this year's budget, but we propose giving some of this 100,000 to them to help with their increase in demand. A few other victim assistance groups that we do fund, Juvenile Assessment Center, we fund at 20,000 a year. Our Victims Outreach, Inc., we fund at 75,000 a year. They were here last week accepting proclamation. And then our Rawson House that works with kids who are subject to crime, we, we give them 10,000 a year right now. So again, 100,000, we would support giving to our victims' assistance partners that we work with. So now I will turn it over to Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Rec Director, to talk about some park and trail improvements.
Thank you, Patrick. So we are proposing just a little over 1.9 million dollars through, of funding through 2024 for park and trail improvements. And I'm going to talk through each one of those projects. The first one is the outdoor fitness court at Panorama Park. And you may recall that this was approved by council in November 22nd of 2021. And that fitness court is scheduled to tentatively open June of this year. So we will definitely share more information as we solidify the ribbon cutting there. But we have four remaining projects that are currently unfunded and considered high impact. So the first one I'm going to talk to you about is the Fruitdale Park Playground Surface. So you may have heard through previous council meetings that we do have issues with people experiencing homelessness utilizing that park. And as a result of that, we do frequently find needles. And unfortunately, when we find needles, they're often in the wood chips on the play surface in the playground. So we are proposing replacing the wood chips with a pour-in-place surface just to create a more safe place for kids to play. And that would cost approximately $225,250. The second project of these four remaining projects is the Panorama Park Tennis Court Replacement. So Panorama Park was constructed in between 1950 and 1952, and that tennis court is original to the park. So it's over 70 years old. And typically, it's recommended to replace the tennis courts every 20 to 25 years. So we've been doing Band-Aid repairs for years where every four years approximately that it'll be resurfaced and then every couple of years it gets crack repairs. So we, that, that tennis court is really on its last leg. And we have really attempted to find additional funding, particularly through GoCo grants. They often want to fund projects that have a more regional impact or, or an impact to more than one particular user group or recreational activity. So we haven't necessarily scored high in our grant requests in the past. So this is why the ARPA dollars, I think, would be really tremendous to work towards this court replacement, to replace with a post-tension concrete. And additionally, it's just important to note that we do occasionally have injuries and complaints related to the cracks in that surface. So it's something that we would really love to see move forward. The next project is the Prospect Lake Water Quality. And we've also applied for GoCo grant funding for this project unsuccessfully. But this funding is for restoration, enhancement, and expansion of wildlife habitat and wildlife habitat. But this funding is for restoration enhancement and expansion of wildlife habitat in areas where native species currently struggle and biodiversity is in decline. It will allow for the purchase of two nano-bubble generators at Prospect Lake, and it will allow for us to contract a professional water quality contractor for three years of nutrient remediation, fishery assessment, invasive species monitoring, and algae control. So essentially, it's going to keep the habitat within the water and then our plants and grass throughout the park in good shape, and it can thrive. And it's also important to note that we did receive a GOCO grant for funding for the fishing pier at Prospect Lake. So it would be really nice to have fish in the lake that can be caught. So, and finally, I just want to talk about the Tabor Lake Trail. This is something that is, that came up years ago with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we actually currently have a senior group from the Colorado School of Mines doing a project assessing that area, and they've collected feedback from our, many of our community members through an online survey and surveying on-site. So we've gotten a lot of great feedback, and they will come back to us with their results at the end of their semester. But essentially, it's a really popular area, as you all know, on the Green Belt, but we don't have a trail that goes all the way around the lake, and there are significant erosion concerns in that area, so we'd have to fund design and construction. And then with that, the trail requirements would meet ADA requirements at that time as well. And another important note is that the workforce housing development that is replacing the Howard Johnson Building would really like to have nice access to that space as well. And so this is a great opportunity for a recreational benefit in that area, and that's nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And the other thing to note with that as well is there's some really great grant funding available that we think this would be an excellent candidate for the Federal Land Water Conservation Grant, which is managed by Colorado Parks and Wildlife here in Colorado. And it only funds trail projects, and it funds up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's a one-to-one match, so having matching funds would be exceptional. And that's it.
Good evening, council. I'll talk briefly about the, the Lena Gulch Flood Plane Project. We're really excited to be able to identify funding for a flood plane project as part of this funding. We don't have a dedicated funding source for flood plane projects, and in our limited CIP on a, in a typical year, you know, when we're typically so focused on bike, pad, road projects, it's, it's hard to identify funding. So this is an exciting opportunity for us. Flood plane projects are inherently beneficial to the extent that they're taking people away from the risk of being impacted by a natural disaster, right? So that's inherently the reason for doing them. In this case, about fifteen homes in and around Lena Gulch in the Sims Swadley area. The, the other benefits, though, of the flood plane projects are it means people don't have to pay for flood insurance, which if you've followed the federal legislation on this topic in recent years, has gotten very expensive and is getting more expensive over the coming years. So that's an additional benefit. And perhaps most importantly, it allows people to make investments in their property. People have significant limitations on how much they can invest in their property if they're located in the flood plain. So by taking these homes out of the flood plain, people can choose to make investments of their property that they might not otherwise have been able to. And lastly, I'll just say, echoing the theme from Karen, it's a leverage opportunity. Anytime we have a capital project of any nature, we always try and leverage other people's money, right? In this case, we have a great partner in the Mile High Flood District who offers fifty-fifty match. So this one point six two five million-dollar project will be equally matched in that same amount with Mile High Flood Dollars. So I'm excited to be able to offer this project.
Great, thanks, Ken. Thanks, Ken. Almost there, folks. Couple more slides here, then we'll open it up for questions and comments from council. So also want to talk about development-related revenues that I mentioned earlier. These are, are considered one-time non-recurring revenues, at least above the certain base that we always get on an annual basis. And again, the, the hospital project is, is one example of a project that's generating a significant amount of, of these revenues, almost eight million in building use tax. So we were able, because of that, we were able to transfer approximately seven million in this year's budget from general fund reserves to the capital budget to provide, to fund additional projects that, that we haven't been able to get to, or increase in, in certain projects, such as our preventative street maintenance. We've been struggling to keep that around two million, I think, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I think this year we have, it's over three million in preventative street maintenance. We were able to fund another historic piece of property, our Recreation Center parking lot, so over twenty years old and was constructed on very, very poor soil and, and when it was constructed many years ago, and, and I think our staff has done a great job keeping it as good as it, it is today, but it, it needs to be fully replaced. And that's, that's about a one point six million dollar project, I believe. We were able to fund that in the CIP budget this year. Some bridge repair. We really haven't had money in bridge repair for many years in our CIP budget. We were able to put some bridge repair money in our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program that we've been hearing kudos for, and, and our neighbors, our neighborhoods like that program, so we were able to bump that up to a hundred thousand dollar budget in this year's budget because of these development-related revenues. We were also able to transfer five hundred thousand in this year's budget into our, what we call our Equipment Replacement Fund. So it's essentially another CIP, another capital project budget that we set up several years ago to save money for large cap, or large equipment, I guess, replacement in the city. And a couple examples are our police radio replacement. Those get replaced about every seven, eight, nine years, I guess. And it's, it's a big price tag, so we're, we're saving money for those replacements in a couple more years, I think we're, we'll be about ready. And then our ERP system that we've been talking to you all about, which is our central financial management system, those are expensive systems, and so we're saving up for, for that also. So, you know, I think we're still going to see some additional reoccurring revenues, and I guess my point I'm trying to make here is that you have some freedom and flexibility, I think, in some of these other one-time revenues, because we also have significant increases in other revenues that are helping us fund our capital projects, and I think we're going to continue seeing some of these one-time development-related revenues for some time. Ken and I were speaking today, we did not budget or project any revenues for some of the other projects at the Clear Creek Crossing Project. The Lifetime Fitness is coming on, potentially going to pull permits this year. We did not estimate any building use tax for that. The second phase of the apartments, the hotel, so we have no revenues projected for those projects, which we anticipate we may see this year. So which we can, I would propose that we continue funneling that money into our capital projects, because again, those are one-time revenues. We don't want to increase our annual operating expenses to match those, because these revenues are not going to be here on an annual basis. Then our last subject tonight is to talk about the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement. We mentioned earlier, we did receive nine point eight million in December of 2021, and I don't think we, I've mentioned this enough or much to you, but we, they still owe us about another half a million, which we will probably see here in the next year or two. So that's something to anticipate. But we, we are recommending, we, that we do reserve that, that funding for Phase Two of Wadsworth, and for a couple different reasons. First of all, there's, there's, I think we just want to get it done. I think the longer we, we make, let that project go, good news, it's going really well right now. I think we're, we have a lot of patience with our residents and businesses, and contractors doing a really good job. Our consultants are handling complaints very quickly, but the longer you drag it out, I think the, the more impatient people are going to get. So we, we want to get it done. We have the money, so we want to get it done. We're estimating anywhere between eight to ten million for Phase Two. And another good reason to go ahead and get Wadsworth done is there's a good likelihood that there's a tenant for the Lucky's Market Place that is vacant. Can't tell you who, because I don't know. They won't tell us who it is, but one of the requirements for this tenant to commit to the site is having a date of when Wadsworth is going to be done in front of Lucky's. They want, once Phase Two of Wadsworth will include a lighted intersection at the main entrance into that shopping center, and this tenant, it's, it's a requirement for them to commit to the site. So that's another reason. Third reason is by completing the project in two phases, it, it adds, it decreases, it adds more money to Phase One, almost a million dollars in other improvements that if we, if we went ahead and committed to Phase Two before Phase One is over, those, those temporary improvements would not have to be made. So it does decrease the overall expense of the final project. As you know, you did approve a few weeks ago funding to complete the construction documents for Phase Two, so that they'll, they'll be ready when funding becomes available. And just so you all, you know, we are also, at the same time, looking for additional alternative funding for Phase Two of Wadsworth. Both the Senate and the House have released congressional directed spending requests, and we are, the Senate is due on April eighth, this Friday, and the House is due next week. So we are submitting for Wadsworth. We were told when we were in DC that we may want to lower our request amount, so we did ask for ten million last year. The House approved it, Congressman Promer approved it, but once it got to the Senate, the Senate didn't include any of those congressionally requested expenditures in the, in the final transportation bill. So I think we, we feel there's a better chance this year, but they did suggest that we probably, we lower our, our ask, and we're, we're looking at probably a half, maybe five million request, and the city would cover the other, other half. So, and that's, that's it, I guess. Done, Mr. Mayor. We, we'll open it up for comments or questions.
I'll turn the overall summary back on.
Yeah.
You may want to open your bottle of water and have a drink. Thank you. So we'll open for questions and start with Counselor Weaver.
Thank you so much. I, I think, I think the way that the city has really thoughtfully gone through all these projects is fabulous. I just, I have a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the specifics of the Tabor Lake Trail. Is, is that a done deal? I've just been hearing from several constituents about who are avid birders and just sort of in light of the conversations we've had on council of thinking about habitat corridors and some things like that. Is, is the funding for that a sort of, the plans already in play? Or is there an opportunity at a later point to say, hey, should this trail, specifically, I've heard some, from some groups, some birding groups, that would not like to see a, a trail go all the way around the lake to keep some of those current habitat corridors. Apparently, it's quite a, a birding haven over there on, at Tabor Lake, and I was just curious if you could talk to them.
I would say that it's not a done deal at all. I mean, we don't have any funding, so it's just conceptual right now. But one of the great things that the group from the School of Mines is doing is asking those questions, and, you know, what would you like to use this space for? And interestingly enough, of the feedback that they presented at our most recent Parks and Recreation Commission, most people don't want bikes utilizing that. So that was one of the questions, bikes versus pedestrians. Currently, we do have some social trails there, meaning people walk there anyway. It's just not particularly safe, and there's even a fenced-off area that people cut through and walk through anyway. So we just really want to create that safe opportunity, but what that space could be utilized for is not determined yet. But certainly, we have birds there, and we're, we're even looking at, it's, I've learned that it's not called a rookery. It's called something else, and I can't recall the name. But how we can maintain that, because as you've noticed, if you've been over there, the trees that the birds live in are not in great shape, and it's not something that you can just fix. So also looking for grant funding for that as well, interestingly enough. So there's a lot of discussion still to be had, if that answers your question.
So the way that paths will be used is under discussion as far as the impact and type of.
Correct.
Thanks. Let's see. Another question I had, and, and this is more just sort of separating this, this money. Couple months ago, we spoke of the Thirty-Eighth Corridor and that there would be, there would be sort of money for that going forward as we go forward with the study that's happening, where there is no curb and gutter on Thirty-Eighth towards Clear Creek Crossing. And I just wanted to make sure, I know that, that that was not discussed sort of in this, and I, and I sort of remember in that conversation that there was the thought that there would be funding down the line, and, and I'm just asking the question from the city, is that something I need to ask in, in about these dollars, or is it something that the city's already thinking about as far as once we get beyond that study?
Yeah, maybe I'll, Ken, jump in here, too, because we are moving forward with, with the design or the conceptual design work. But yeah, there, there's, there's, you know, we have a huge list of projects, right? I can't even remember what the total number is on that list now, but of capital projects. And we're trying to, as I mentioned earlier, trying to leverage the funds appropriately. And Thirty-Eighth Avenue, we, first of all, we got to get it, we have to have it designed, and, and we didn't mention tonight, we could have added it to the presentation, but, you know, the Urban and Rural Authority just issued bonds, and they're, they're doing a lot of capital projects across the city, other bridge repairs and, and intersection designs and, and different things. And then, you know, we, we've talked about this as a council. I, I, I believe a next step for City Council is to look at another bond, a city bond. The, we're getting close. I think I looked at numbers again, it's probably by the end of 2024, we're going to reach our thirty-eight and a half million on our, the current bond we have, and that's when that sales, temporary sales tax would have to cease. I would recommend that we find additional projects, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and, and fund it that way. I don't think any of our funding pots that we have today would fund a full reconstruction of Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and we do have the money that we can use from general fund to cover the design, I believe. I don't know if we have a cost yet, but we're scoping that out right now.
Yeah, we're, we're scoping it out right now. So we, we hope to have a, we're going to get back in front of council to talk about that scope in the next probably sixty days, I'd say. We have, we don't have it on the calendar yet, but I've reviewed a scope and provided comments to my staff, so it's moving forward. And obviously, with a robust public engagement effort, as that's a very, you know, it's a, it's a project that's close to a lot of people and very meaningful to those people and impactful. So we'll be back with a request for a budget supplemental, coincident with awarding that contract. But before we do that, we want to get in front of council with kind of rough order of magnitude what we think the budget will be, and just get your support for the, the scope of work.
All right. And lastly, I, I was just curious if the request regarding the bike trail, not the bike trail, excuse me, the bike lane on Wadsworth that was spoken to, is that something that could be included with the, with the, the second phase of Wadsworth?
It's, it's a sidewalk, I believe. I don't know if it was, if there's enough space for multi-use ten, ten-foot or not. We, and I believe we are going after a grant for that. We did cost this out several years ago, because this has come up several times, and, and I agree, it's needed. I don't know if we could fit it into Phase Two, because I think that changes the boundaries of the project, and I don't think that would, that would open up too many cans of worms, I believe, with Fed monies and, but I know, I'm not going to give the number exactly right. It was over a million, it was over a million to, to do that stretch. It's, it's not just a sidewalk, it's, the grade is very difficult there, there's a ditch it has to go over, Rocky Mountain Ditch, I believe. But I believe we are going after a grant for that. There's some pretty significant money that we feel we have a pretty good chance of getting money for, but do you remember what grant that was? I can't remember what specifically grant that was.
It's a, I think it's a state pot of money. I think it's the Main Streets Program.
I thought it was part of the Main Streets Program, yeah.
I just would agree that that's a very needed thing to, to connect up north and south to our other areas. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, I got counsel. Thank you, Counselor Heit, pardon me, Stites, and then Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, Ms. Weaver and I must be a very good team, because she stole my last two questions. No, that's okay. I was exactly going to ask about 38th and then Wadsworth, so thank you for answering those. I think this is a very well thought out list, and I think I would support it going forward.
I may have seen her looking at your paper. Counselor Holtein.
Yeah, I've got, we've got the light doesn't work, Mike. So first of all, it's just really exciting to be in a position as a city to really be able to like substantially address a lot of the needs that we have, like, you know, whether it's services or investments in the city. So very exciting time, and I'm just really proud of who we are as a city with the priorities we've put forward, with where we want the funds to go. So I think that, I think I'm really proud of our staff for, for really thinking about the people in our community who could really benefit from these dollars. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, a couple of things, I seem to remember that they were also in the budget that we approved for things like the resurfacing of the, the rec center parking lot. Am I remembering? Because I remember we talked about that, because I got really excited about improving the Clear Creek Trail Crossing there. So how does that kind of work where we've talked about these before, and they're showing them here?
Yeah, that, that last slide that I spoke to, that, that was more informational, just to let council know that a lot of our one-time revenues are going to good work, and we have budgeted them already. So the rec center parking lot is one of those, that's already in this, in this year's budget.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then, let's see here, with some of the, the services that were discussed around helping like food insecurity and some of the homelessness, how much of those, how much are, are we hearing like coordinated, I know you touched on this, but are, are surrounding communities also contributing to stuff that is regional homeless coordination? I'm not exactly sure what my question is, but, I mean, we're giving a lot of money, and it's much needed, and, but we're, it's also, you know, a regional issue that we're addressing. So I'm just sort of curious what the balance is for, some of it you've named specifically, but others, I'm just sort of curious.
Sure. The navigation centers is definitely a regional project, and we're drafting an IGA with the county and all the cities in Jefferson County to address those partnerships and how we'll fund those navigation centers. So as I mentioned, we, we have a typical formula we use when we enter, enter into these IGAs with the county and the cities, that it's based on population, so we pay somewhere between six and eight percent of the budget for those projects. So yes, all the cities and the county are committed to helping to fund the navigation centers, the construction of them, and then also the long-term operations. But then, as you know, we're also part of the regional program of the, the homeless navigation program, and every community has homeless navigators, navigate door, or oars, plural, and, and are contributing in that way also. Yeah.
All right. And then my last one, so like Councilmember Weaver said, and as you know, Patrick, because I've brought it up with you multiple times, that stretch of, of trail on the west side of Wadsworth from 35th to 32nd is pretty critical. Several of us at the table know that there is a huge chunk of transportation funding. Wheat Ridge is not the only city with, with a bunch of money. So I would really like us to consider taking the 1.5 from the Wadsworth project and designating that for that trail segment, recognizing that between, like either, whether it's the revitalizing Main Streets, or the multimodal options funds, or the subregional forum through Dr. Cog, there's a lot of opportunities for us to, to get the funding either for that sidewalk, or for the remaining, you know, one and a half to $2 million deficit for the Wadsworth project. But I'd like to get that project, because to me, to invest the millions and millions of dollars that we are for the really robust bike ped facilities that are part of Phases One and Two, to have it just stop and have like a dirt trail and make the other connection to 32nd, which is a transit line and connects to our schools, just, it seems like it, it doesn't match with, with the other investments we're making.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I understood your math. You said the, take the 1.5 from the Wadsworth project and put it into the sidewalk?
Yeah, so we're talking about designating the, the
9.8.
9.8. There's way too many numbers, way too many numbers. So taking the 9.8 and taking 1.5 out of that. Or we could take one out of it, and some of the other, you know, business use fees that we're seeing from some other Clear Creek investment to put towards that. I just, I'd like to get that project memorialized somewhere as, as significant, and have some funding dedicated to it, either that can be used for local match for if we get like a, you know, multimodal options fund, we only need to match it 25%. So, so designating some funds would make it, you know, robust for some of the grant funding we're going for, and, you know, our reduction in our ask either through congressionally designated spending, or our other transportation funding is, we're only now asking for 2 million for Wadsworth. It's a shovel-ready, mostly funded project, and was very attractive for, for funding, so.
So if, if we don't get any congressional directed funding for Wadsworth, and, and the Wadsworth Phase Two is 9.8 million, I'm assuming you, are you still proposing that we take 1.5 out and do the sidewalk and, and try to find the money for Wadsworth, or?
I think what I'm asking for, for now is to have that bear map. If, if we get there and the sidewalk project has to get, get shelved, then, I mean, I don't think anyone's going to let that get in the way, but, but I think it, it also sort of clarifies, you know, even if what we're doing is setting aside $1 million and trying to find the other 500, I just, I'd like to get that, that in there, because I, it's a project that once we get done with all of Wadsworth, it's going to be really hard, and we're not going to have this kind of money again for a long time, so.
Yeah, and we did put in the memo that, yeah, hopefully, we, we do get some grant funding for, for Phase Two of Wadsworth, and that does, that frees up unrestricted funding that you can put towards other capital projects, so. And that's basically what you're saying, that you, you would want that to be a priority as the other capital projects.
Yeah, and I'd support just putting aside 1 million towards it now. And I think that that all feels like then we've got easy, easy little things to jump in. At the end of the day, we don't want Phase Two to not move forward because of the cost savings and the impact on our community to move that forward.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm, and then Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also agree that we need to extend that sidewalk along the Wadsworth. It's a major arterial, and it'd be nice to have some type of timeline, something a little more fixed of when that might happen, and what kind of funds would be going towards that. And then, the one question I kind of, or comment I had on the Tabor Lake Trail, I, I do think there needs to be some type of discussion with the birding, but in general, people like loop trails, and, and I'm sure that probably Chief Murtha might agree, that having more eyes on the trail is probably going to be safer for everybody, that there's a circulation of people going around the trail, and, and not bikes, but just people, and that, I think that would probably create a safer, and I've, I've been on the Clear Creek Trail many, many, many times, biking, I've been walking, I take my kids on the trail, very familiar with that area, I fish with my kids on that specific lake, so I have a pretty good understanding of what that lake's about. And I think if there was some type of trail where, you know, different parties, discussions happened, it would be a safer, and I think it would be a more inclusive environment for everybody. On the Fruitdale Park playground surface, the, the one question I guess I have is I, I understand that we've had some issues at that park with the porta-potties getting burnt. I am aware that sometimes these porta-place surfaces, people try to start that on fire. Have you noticed, is that a, is that an issue that you've seen in the, in the city?
That is not an issue that I've seen in Wheat Ridge or any other organization I worked with, but I suppose it's possible.
Yeah, and I, when I say, you know, I've, I've seen it, as I've gone through some, I can't remember which park it was, but like a very small portion, but I don't know if that was an issue or not. And then my, my last comment is, I think that's really exciting to have that Panera Park, the Hennessy Court replacement done. Will the city be looking at the drainage around that as, as well?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get you an answer to that.
Thank you. And then, I'm excited about that prospect lake water quality. Having worked in fisheries, I think this would be a really important project to get people to that lake, especially, you know, young kids and working with the state for, to provide that type of habitat. So thank you for that project. I have no further questions or comments.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, this is a completely different situation than when I first started on council, where we were looking at what vehicles we were not going to buy because we didn't have the money. So this is extremely exciting. I appreciate all of the time and effort and outreach to our partner, to our, to like our, our partners on trying to figure out how we can significantly make our residents' lives better through mental health, behavioral health, and housing. I'm very happy to see, for a really long time, and last February, sorry, not last February, this year, February last year, when we were at our council retreat, and it, one of the things that I was really wanting to get across is that mental, mental health is so important that it should be a line item in our budget. And mental health is, you know, early intervention to things like drug and alcohol, homelessness, and so I'm, I'm really glad that we're spending some of our time and money on that. I do support the, I, I would also specifically like the sidewalk called out in some way or another in the documents, and even if it's only 1 million. So we still have a half a million to come from the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement, so there's part of, there's part of it there, a 0.5, if we need the 1.5 for it. And then also, it would mean that we would commit 8.8 to Wadsworth, 8.8 million to Wadsworth instead of 9.8, and we would be able to get that piece done. Lots of people have been asking for that piece for a long time, that also something that has been reoccurring for as long as I've been in, in chambers. So I really support that, and I, I'd like to see if when we make the, the consensus to move forward, that whoever makes that consensus adds that we commit 8.8 to Wads and 1 million to sidewalk at 32nd to 35th.
Thank you, Counselor Nosler Beck, and then Counselor Hutchinson.
Same thing that everybody's said so far tonight, this is so, so exciting to be able to see all that we're going to be able to get done. And I actually liked seeing a reminder about the capital improvement stuff that we're doing, because the 44th Bridge is on there still, and can't wait for that to happen. So thanks for everybody on the work with this. One thing I wanted to just bring to staff's attention, and this, this is, I have not talked to any of you about this yet, because I was out for the last couple of weeks, but on March 15th, Counselor Stites and I met with the family liaisons from a lot of the, the public schools here in Wheat Ridge, and also the Rotary was there, the Chamber, and lots of community organizations, including like Jefferson Action Center. Anyway, really incredible meeting hosted by Liz Romero from Wilmore Davis. I'm really proud of Liz, she's amazing. But great meeting, and we learned a lot about the kindness closets that the neighborhood elementary schools are, are facilitating and inviting families into, and families are finding this is a very accessible and approachable space to get access to clothing and some food, and just connect with some resources that they need. And so this group is looking to expand what's offered in these kind of kindness closets or hubs. And I think there might be some opportunities if we're looking at these funds. I don't think it's going to be a significant spend, but just, I'd like to, it sounds like you all will be coming back to us with more on this, and I'd like to just have a minute to share that with staff and into some detail on what maybe that budget item could be. We, we both, Counselor Stites and I had asked for those educational marketing dollars, and we, we already have a request for those that we need to get submitted to you. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and then I'll follow up with some more details on what that might actually cost, and see if there's a way to use some of these funds for that. Also at that meeting was Wheat Ridge High School, and they were talking about the need for the behavioral, behavioral health specialist, and so I'm really happy to see that in the budget as well. I just had a question also at this, maybe the, my, Ally, you might be the best person to answer this question, but do school districts qualify for these ARPA funds as well? Is this something, or is it just from municipalities?
It's just, this, the, the, the local government funds, which is really what, I can't remember the full acronym, it's like SLFS, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, yeah, it's just, it's just
I didn't know if one of those was like SD, school districts.
No, I'm actually not entirely sure of ARPA at all through a separate, I don't think they're funded
There's, there's many grant programs that come out of ARPA, though, that schools, that are eligible for.
Right.
Couldn't tell you what exactly right now.
Okay, great. And then Karen, just a quick question to you. The last, when we were talking, I think with JCPH, who was visiting with us, we talked about Sharps containers in the parks, and I know we also talked about needles in the playing areas, playgrounds, but do we have any update on the Sharps containers?
We are working on the Sharps containers. I know as of, gosh, I think it was last week, getting the Spanish translation done properly. We have some that were ordered temporarily, because the ones that we want there permanently are backordered significantly, so it'll take a while to get there, but I think within the next couple of weeks, we'll at least, we're starting at Fruitdale, and we'll expand from there.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, again.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do approve of all these categories that, where the money is going to be going to. One thing about Wadsworth Boulevard, I drove down it today. We've got two more years of this. If you think people aren't going to be kind of anxious, it was interesting today. I think the money that has been allotted for Wadsworth, we need to finish the project. And then you go and figure out, you know, maybe right before it ends or something, how can you get money for this other thing? Because we're talking two more years of Wadsworth, and I, I mean, I'm serious, it's going to be kind of nerve-wracking.
Hopefully, a year and a half.
Pardon me?
Hopefully, just a year and a half.
Well, that's when you want the new tenant by, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, all right. So I just think it's important to finish a project once it's been started, if you have the money. We're in an inflationary period right now, we have no idea what it's going to be in a couple of years, all right? And so that's my point on that. And also Stevens Elementary has a hub, and they've had it for a few years, so they're, they are in the schools.
Yeah, and Judy, what they're looking to do is move it from, like, instead of just having Stevens have the one hub, have it at all of the elementary schools, or the schools, middle school or high schools.
Well, and also at Stevens, as I understand, anybody can go there from any school. So it isn't just for that school.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Going to go to Ms. Dozeman, and then I'll
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you to all of the staff for this presentation. I can tell that you worked very hard, and I appreciate that you strategically prioritized some of these funds and leveraged the money that we have, and, and worked with partners to ensure that we have the best benefit from these one-time dollars. I especially appreciate the water infrastructure. I especially appreciate the water infrastructure at Lena Gulch, because that happened to be one of the questions at the candidate forum of what I would designate ARPA funds to, and one of them was water infrastructure to bring some of our residents out of the floodplain. And so, I really appreciate that we are focusing on the best value to our residents. I love to see all of the improvement projects in our, in our parks. You know, I grew up at Panorama and Paramount playing softball, and so walk into Prospect and really appreciate our use of the, of the money to ensure that future generations can continue to enjoy those, those parks and those trails. And we have talked at council to great length about, you know, homelessness and behavioral health, and so I am especially happy to see that we have as many funds going to those issues as we do. I, I think that us prioritizing that will really help our community, and I'm very grateful for Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Porchlight, Family Tree, and all of the partners that we continue to work with. So, thank you for all of that.
And Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. It is on, okay. I did have another question. Patrick, you mentioned that some of that, the, the funding that's going to the CIP, and you mentioned 100,000 in the traffic, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Yeah.
Is that an additional 100 or taking it to 100?
That's taking it to 100. I think we used to budget 25 or 30 a year.
Yeah, it was actually, I think, at 50, though, this year.
50, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was, oh, it's 100.
For this year.
For this year, yeah, okay.
Yeah, 100, yeah.
So, so there's no, are you doing additional, or you're just funding the 100 that we had designated?
It's 100, but, you know, if, if we have the demands, we'll come to council and say we need more money. Honestly, we never even, I don't think we spent our full 35 when we had 35 budgeted, but I think the program's getting more popular and more people are hearing about it. So, if we have a demand of more than 100, we'll come to council and ask for more.
Okay, and I have something else.
Could I just make a clarification on, on the slide that we talked about, the development related revenues? These, those particular projects we brought up, we're not asking for your approval on or consensus on funding for those tonight, it's already been done. It's more just a reminder that these are one, these one-time revenue sources have gone to these things. Does that make sense already? And I think, City Manager, you're sort of saying, look, as these one-time revenues potentially continue into 22, into 23 and 24, we'll be coming to you with those similar requests. Let's infuse it into the CIP or the, I like to call it the ERF, the Equipment Replacement Fund, where, again, it's not, we're not counting on them to fund general operations. So, tonight, that little section is more a reminder of, of the things you've already funded. Does that make sense? Sorry.
Thank you, that was really helpful, that actually clarified it. I will, I realize that I'm partially answering my own question here, but we do have on the future agenda items revisiting that Neighborhood Traffic Management, and if we're looking at, you know, increasing our investments in how we're managing traffic, it would be really helpful to revisit the strategy and like the different interventions that we're using, and, and thinking about it maybe a little bit more strategically and a little bit more proactively. So, just, if, if we are getting increased requests and we're getting over 100,000, it really, we, we should be looking at revisiting that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go back to, to Ms. Hoppe, I had a couple of questions myself. Karen, I know I'll get, I'll get asked about this at the next coffee with the mayor, any, any chance to get pickleball courts at Panorama Park? And I didn't know, my wife said, well, can't you just restripe the, the tennis courts into pickleball courts? And so, I, and I don't, I've played tennis, but I haven't played pickleball, so go, go through the, the one, two, threes of.
Well, I'm not a pickleball expert, but I do know that there's ways to utilize existing courts for pickleball with, with different equipment and, and striping and things like that. So, is that a possibility? Utilizing the existing tennis courts? I believe so.
Okay.
But I can do some more research and certainly provide you with more specific information.
I know, I know there'll be, be residents who advocate strongly for pickleball, so just, just FYI.
It's very popular.
The other thing is that I'll, I'll report back. We talked about the HDMI Housing Stability Flex Fund that the Metro Mayor supports, and so Counselor Holtein, I think we have about 85% of the cities in the Metro Mayor, the 38 cities, support that, support that fund to one level or another, and we're trying to, to boost everybody up on that because it does, it does do great work. It's sort of a, a fund of last resort if you need to keep people housed or, and keep them from falling, falling out of a housing situation. So, landlord deposits and, and damage mitigation, those, those types of things, the deposits and stuff. And again, I gather that the cost on the Lena, the Lena Gulch project, the 1.625 is, is our, our 50%, so, and, and I think it's really great. I also said on the, on the Flood District Board, to be able to match funds like that, and with the increase, the full funding for that, it's become much more robust, so whatever, whatever dollars we can do in the wastewater area, we, we make good money there, so, thank you. I think it's a great list, myself. So, Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for consensus to direct staff to move forward on the proposed spending plan for the 7.9 million on the ARPA funding, and to direct staff to move forward on the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement to commit 8.8 million to Wadsworth and 1 million to a sidewalk on 32nd and 30, to 35th Avenue.
Okay. It looks like we have consensus to move forward with that direction. Does that give you the direction you need?
That's perfect. Thank you very much for your attention. I know that was a lot of numbers, but appreciate your, your cooperation and, and help on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Patrick, and, and staff for a good report and a good, and a lot of work, background work. We're going to take a short recess and be back here at 8:15.
Let's see, April 4th, yeah, I knew that. I was gonna look it up and I said, you know, you know what day it is. So, we are going to move to our second agenda item. And this is residential organized waste strategies. We have Kayla Betzold, our Sustainability Coordinator, and Mary Ann Schilling. With our city manager's office. And who's, who's gonna go? Are you gonna go first?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then, then I will turn it over to Mary Ann.
Well, thanks. Good evening, council. I'm Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. As you all may recall, on January 10th, City Council asked for staff to return at a future study session date to go over what we currently do regarding our residential waste practices. And then also to go over what some future strategies could look like and have a conversation about that. So, we have Kayla Betzold, Sustainability Coordinator, here tonight to give us that picture and to talk about potential future strategies for your consideration. So, here you go.
Thank you, and good evening, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Kayla Betzold, and I'm the Sustainability Coordinator. Tonight, I'll be presenting on Organized Waste Strategies for Council to Consider. And as a reminder, tonight's presentation is informational, and we are asking that council consider this information and provide direction on next steps. So, the presentation will consist of the following topics. First, I will provide an overview of organized waste and some of the benefits and issues that we see surrounding this topic. Next, you'll learn about Wheat Ridge's current waste hauling system and feedback that we've been hearing from residents on this topic, as well as how a waste hauling strategy can support goals outlined in current city adopted plans. Next, I'll review four potential organized waste strategies along with cost estimates. And lastly, I will review the research that I've collected from Pure City's Organized Waste Initiatives. And again, we're seeking direction from council about how to proceed with organized waste in Wheat Ridge. So, the term "organized waste" refers to a municipal approach to a more responsible way to manage solid waste within a city. Organized waste strategies aim to increase the efficiency of a waste hauling system by streamlining the routes and optimizing the number of providers. Organized waste systems have benefits and challenges. One of the potential benefits of an organized system is a reduction in residential costs. Trash collection costs are significantly impacted by transportation expenses. So, the more efficient a collection route, the less fuel, labor, and maintenance that are required, which results in lower costs for the hauler that can be passed along to the customer. According to a 2019 Lakewood report, these organized systems have been shown to reduce residential costs by 12 to 35 percent. Next, an organized system would reduce truck traffic and associated road impacts. And the Lakewood report also states that in an open system, a typical neighborhood street sees an average of 10 to 12 truck passes every two weeks. And according to a 2018 Arvada study, each trash truck is equivalent to about 1,400 vehicles per day in terms of road damage. An organized system would also increase neighborhood cleanliness and safety. In an organized system, neighborhoods would see one collection day per week, so there'd be less trash bins on the streets. And additionally, reducing the number of trucks on the streets would improve safety for residents and road users. Lastly, an organized system would have environmental benefits. So, all residents would receive recycling bins. And some strategies incorporate volume-based pricing, which is where residents pay more per month for a larger trash bin, which would further incentivize waste diversion and potentially increase recycling rates in Wheat Ridge. It should be noted that further analysis is needed in Wheat Ridge to quantify these benefits and the associated costs with them. Some issues outlined in current research include the lack of waste hauler choice and a reduction in market competition, along with a lack of specific services that residents might currently have, such as cart-to-door service, where the hauler services the cart and then brings it back up to the resident's door. And large-item pickup events among a variety of other services that specific waste haulers are providing to our residents. Another consideration is the staffing and program management costs to the city should council choose to move forward. It is important to understand here that Colorado law does protect a resident's right to choose their own waste hauler. So, if an organized waste strategy was implemented, residents would still have a choice to opt out of the program, but there likely would be a cost associated with this choice. There are various ways a city can manage an organized waste system, and each of these strategies has an effect on these benefits and issues. So, I'll discuss these more in detail later when I get into specific strategies. Next, I'd like to give council an understanding of this topic's history in Wheat Ridge and a picture of our current system. Council first considered how waste was managed in 2010, and the topic was added as a ballot question with the language shown here on the slide. The measure was defeated with 65 percent of voters opposing the initiative. Our preliminary research has shown there to be eight waste haulers in Wheat Ridge. Currently, there is no code specific to residential or commercial trash or recycling services other than a code regulating the hours of operation between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And for comparison, other cities in this region have added requirements such as requiring haulers to provide recycling services, pay higher annual business licensing fees, or pay fees for each trash and recycling vehicle operating within a city. In Wheat Ridge, haulers are currently required to pay the $20 annual business license fee to operate. In 2017, the original Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee was appointed by the mayor and council, and they were tasked with developing recommendations for the city in six topic areas that were determined by council. And one of these topic areas is solid waste and recycling. So, based on the direction from council in 2017 to focus on this topic as a pillar of sustainability, the city has been pursuing a variety of waste diversion efforts. After the acceptance of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Report, the committee began researching waste policy, and they have collected a great deal of information on this topic about Wheat Ridge and various other cities and their, their policies. The city entered into a partnership with Scraps Mile High in 2020 to begin, to begin a compost drop-off program at the Rec Center in City Hall, which gave residents the opportunity to drop off unlimited amounts of compost, kitchen scraps for a lower monthly rate than the curbside pickup service. It's about half the price of pickup service at your door. Additionally, the city began the Fall Yard Waste Weekend in 2020, which diverted organics like leaves from the landfill. And we also received grant funds to purchase 30 zero waste stations, which have been used for a variety of Wheat Ridge events, such as performances in the park, local works, movies on the ridge, and the Harvest Festival. And so, these zero-waste stations are not only diverting material from the landfill, but they're also familiarizing Wheat Ridge residents with recycling and composting services. In 2021, the city began its Spring Paint Recycling Event with green sheen to keep paint out of local landfills. And other waste diversion efforts include the Household Waste Audit that Sustainable Wheat Ridge created and is currently housed on the city website, sustainable neighborhoods programs like electronics and battery recycling events, as well as the Preferred Neighborhood Waste Hauler Initiative within the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, which is currently offering neighbors in current sustainable neighborhoods bulk pricing, volume-based costs, the curb-to-door service, large-item pickup events, and the curbside compost collection for both your kitchen scraps and your yard waste. So, as you can see, the city has increased waste diversion efforts over the last few years since we have received direction from council in 2017 to do so. And all of our waste diversion programs, as well as the associated metrics, can be found in the council packet. So, next, I'd like to provide council with information from our residents in regard to waste management. First, the resident survey. So, Wheat Ridge first asked residents in 2018 about a single trash hauler on the resident survey. And at this time, about one quarter of residents said they would strongly support or strongly oppose the city taking such action. The topic did not appear again on the resident survey until 2018. And in, and in 2018, we asked residents how important it was to them that the city divert trash from landfills. Fifty-three percent of respondents said it was essential or very important, and 38 percent of respondents said starting a compost program was essential or very important. 2021 was the first time since 2008 that the city specifically asked about single hauler or organized waste systems in neighborhoods. And at this time, 55 percent of respondents said it was essential or very important. Next, the city's Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program. So, this program started in late 2020, and the program has covered six out of the 10 Wheat Ridge neighborhoods. They've found mentions of trash and recycling service as well as calls for a city-managed system in each neighborhood. On average, about 5 percent of residents in each neighborhood participate in round one of the Let's Talk program, which is a survey and/or small group discussions. And it should be noted that in this round one phase of the Let's Talk program, there are open-ended questions, so residents aren't being prompted to specifically make comments about this topic. But out of the, the 5 percent that responded, about 1 percent of those respondents called for a single trash hauler and 5 percent requested additional trash recycling and composting services from the city. On average, 20 percent of respondents mentioned traffic and road conditions as an issue in Wheat Ridge, both of which would be improved through an organized system. Additional feedback that we've received from residents, one being the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. When a neighborhood joins Sustainable Neighborhoods, the, the leadership team creates an interest survey that they send out to every address within a neighborhood boundary, asking what sustainability topics their, their neighbors find of most value. In Applewood Village, more than 90 percent of survey responses, respondents were either interested or very interested in the, in a neighborhood preferred trash hauler project. Paramount Heights and Panorama Park also found waste and organized waste as, as topics that were of high interest to their neighbors as well. Additionally, the city receives two to three calls per month from residents asking about how to sign up for services through the city. And council members receive emails and calls from their constituents asking about waste services as well. Lastly, responsible waste management has been a topic that Sustainable Wheat Ridge has supported for many years, and they have included a letter of support with the packet and wish to work with the city should council provide direction on this project. Our Responsible Waste Management Strategy and its associated benefits do have alignment with adopted city plans, and I'd like to talk through a few of those examples. So, in council's 2035 Vision Statement, "Great Neighborhoods and Environmental Stewardship" are mentioned. Additionally, council wrote that residents will have opportunities to recycle and compost and that innovation on sustainability is supported and encouraged so the city can continue to promote a safe and healthy environment. The Comprehensive Plan mentions community recycling in Goal Three, "A Sustainable Future." And additional mentions in the Comprehensive Plan that support organized waste include fewer mention, mentions of fewer vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas reduction, and improved air quality. In regard to traffic, the plan describes working with partners to improve traffic congestion in order to support air quality and reduce vehicle hours traveled in Wheat Ridge. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan mentions trash cans in neighborhoods and routinely identifies traffic as a hindrance to the city achieving more bike and pet activity. In the Sustainability Final Report and Recommendations published by Sustainable Wheat Ridge in 2018, in addition to the solid waste and recycling recommendations, transportation sector goals supporting a reduction in vehicle miles traveled and diesel trucks align with a more responsible waste management strategy. So, moving into the next part of this presentation, I would like to review four potential organized waste strategies for council to consider. These four strategies have been crafted based on staff research and peer city review. However, if council has other ideas, we'd be happy to consider those as well. The first strategy to consider is enhanced licensing requirements. Through this strategy, council would pass an ordinance adding requirements for waste haulers to obtain a business license to operate in Wheat Ridge. There are a wide variety of requirements that council could consider, such as recycling, data reporting, volume-based pricing requirements. I've listed them on, on the slide here, and some or all of these could be included in, into a city policy. In this scenario, any hauler that's able to meet the requirements would then be able to operate in Wheat Ridge with an annual business license, similar to how they do today. And additionally, individual residents would then choose their waste haulers, similar to how they do today. Through this system, residents would likely gain additional services, as these would be required by the city. However, the additional services may result in higher service costs for residents as the city would be requiring more of haulers without directly increasing their operational efficiency. This type of system would maintain market competition, as any hauler able to meet the requirements would be able to operate. However, this may not address the number of trash trucks operating on the roads and the associated traffic noise and neighborhood concerns. Depending on the number and the type of regulations, this type of system may reduce the number of haulers that would be able to operate in Wheat Ridge. However, we would need to conduct additional research and, and potentially outreach to waste haulers to know this for certain. If recycling or volume-based pricing requirements were added in this scenario, Wheat Ridge would likely see environmental benefits, such as increased waste diversion rates. However, this system would likely result in greater administrative and financial costs to the city as the licensing requirements and the associated customer service concerns would need to be managed by city staff. This strategy could also be considered as a stepping stone towards a more robust organized waste system in the future. Other cities in this region have started by tightening the licensing requirements and then moving towards a citywide strategy later on. The second potential strategy for council to consider is a city-contracted hauler, similar to the program that we're seeing in Arvada and Golden. In this program, the city would manage a competitive procurement process, evaluate the responses, and then choose, enter into a contract with one or potentially multiple haulers. Residents would then automatically be enrolled in the program. And like I've stated in this presentation, Colorado law does protect a resident's right to choose their waste hauler. And so, residents would have an option to opt out of this program, and there likely would be a fee associated with this choice. To enhance market competition within this scenario, an additional strategy called "districting" could be considered. Districting is where the city would be divided into geographical districts, and a competitive procurement process would be conducted in each of these districts. There are, however, various considerations with districting, such as the equity issue of potentially, of pricing potentially being different in, in different districts based on the efficiency of the waste hauler's route. So, if we have one district where the homes are closer together and there's more increased efficiency, a hauler might bid that district at a lower rate than a portion of the city that, you know, there, there's more vehicle miles traveled within that district. In the city-contracted strategy, costs would likely decrease for residents as there would be one hauler providing services to a majority of the city. The increased efficiency would reduce the number of trucks on the streets, which would improve the safety, traffic, and road impacts. Regulations like access to recycling could be built into the contract and would likely result in environmental benefits, such as increased recycling rates and less air pollution. Issues with this system include the perceived lack of choice of a waste hauler, and increased operational costs for the city to manage the contract and potentially the customer service and billing aspects of the program. The next strategy to consider is the Preferred Hauler System. In this, in this scenario, the city would manage a, a competitive procurement process, evaluate the responses, and choose, choose a preferred residential waste hauler. The difference between this strategy and the city-contracted hauler strategy is that in this program, residents would opt into the program rather than opting out of the program, similar to the current program that we're seeing in Wheat Ridge Sustainable Neighborhoods. In this scenario, service costs would likely decrease. However, the costs would depend on the percentage of residents that opt into the program. To give an example, in the Wheat Ridge Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, neighbors are seeing significant reduction in monthly service costs, but only about 10 percent of neighbors are participating in the neighborhood programs at this point. Low participation is, could be due to confusion from residents in sustainable neighborhoods about how to, how to cancel their current services, they don't know if they're in a contract, or people just not interested in switching their waste haulers. In a scenario like this one, the open-market system would be maintained, and residents would retain hauler choice. However, the traffic, road conditions, noise, safety, and the neighborhood aesthetics would not improve unless a majority of residents within a neighborhood opted into the program. Similarly, the city would not realize the environmental benefits unless a majority of residents participated in the program. Since residents would opt into this program, it is likely that there would be a large financial and administrative burden on the city in regard to marketing and communication, as well as the program management piece. The last strategy to consider is a municipal waste hauling system. Through this strategy, the city would administer residential waste hauling services as a city-managed utility. This strategy would require significant upfront costs to the city in the form of a waste management department, additional staff, and funds to purchase the trash and recycling trucks and carts for residents. Benefits of this system include the city's management of the Benefits of this system include the city's management of the trucks, which would address the traffic, road conditions, safety, noise, and neighborhood aesthetics, and the associated environmental benefits. However, the issues include reducing the hauler choice and the market competition. And without further study, it can't be determined if residential costs would decrease with this type of system because of the significant cost to the city. This table shows a comparison in monthly rates and services that cities and programs are seeing with each of the four proposed strategies. All four strategies are able to incorporate the volume-based pricing, recycling, and composting services. City contracted systems are seeing the lowest cost for residents, as there is one or few haulers in these systems, and the increased efficiency in the city contracted systems is resulting in lower costs, which is passed on to residents. Staff conducted interviews with seven cities that have approached organized waste in their own communities within the last five years, either by starting a program or by rebidding a current contract. This table shows the organized waste approach in each of the cities. Three cities have moved into a city contracted hauler program through a council-passed ordinance. One city has retained market competition but tightened regulations through zero-waste ordinance. Three cities have attempted to move towards a city contracted hauler, but the initiative was either stopped by public opposition, or the ballot initiative was defeated by On average, peer cities require two to four years to conduct public engagement, research organized waste policy, and develop a city-specific strategy. Using feedback from each of the seven cities, I've constructed a potential timeline for this initiative. After the topic is brought to city leadership, which can either be done by residents, staff, or leadership themselves, the research phase usually begins. During this phase, staff, sustainability committees, and consultants have worked together to model potential waste hauling scenarios, to provide the community with a better understanding of trash truck impacts, emissions reduction, and other scenario modeling and economic impacts. After initial research has been conducted, typically a public engagement campaign around the topic begins, and again, typically, this is a collaboration between city staff and a sustainability committee. This engagement is meant to inform staff about resident interests and resident concerns, so that staff can utilize this information when developing a proposed organized strategy and potentially an RFP. After the research and public engagement phases, typically, cities have presented this initial research and community feedback to city leadership and asked for their direction. After receiving direction, staff typically continues public engagement efforts and works to develop a city-specific strategy, oftentimes working with a consultant or a sustainability committee. Staff will likely present additional information to leadership a variety of times, and when the strategy has been finalized, an ordinance or a ballot question will take place. After a strategy has been approved or passed by voters, the implementation phase begins, and staff typically require one to two years of planning before a program begins in a Peer cities have seen strong public opposition to this topic. Cities that have gradually changed their waste management systems have seen higher levels of support from residents, and cities that have attempted to start an organized waste program within the last five years, either through a council-passed ordinance or a ballot question, have seen significantly higher public opposition than cities that have approached the topic more than 10 years ago. Cities have cited misinformation from waste hauling companies as a potential reason for public opposition, and many residents have opposed organized waste systems because it affects the current open market economy. Should council provide direction on this topic, there are a variety of considerations, so I'll keep it high level in this presentation. First, it should be noted that there hasn't been a successful example of an organized waste ballot question in this region within the last five years. There are additional considerations in regard to the language that can be included on a ballot question, and debate among cities about the amount of information that should or should not be included on a ballot question. Next, most cities have hired consultants to assist with modeling, impact analysis, and public engagement, and so this is something to consider should council be interested in moving forward. A major recommendation from peer cities was to allow time for staff to conduct public engagement around this topic. The public engagement efforts, like I said, will inform staff about residents' interests and their concerns surrounding this topic, which is very important when developing the organized waste strategy and the associated RFP. Council may also consider the number of city staff that should be dedicated to this type of project. Other cities have dedicated between one and five staff members to the project as it's being developed, and then have retained between one and three staff members dedicated to the topic, depending on the scope of the strategy that a city employs. Should council be interested in moving forward with the strategy, and there is an RFP in the future, there are various considerations in regard to the development of the RFP, such as how customer billing should be handled, who will own the trash carts, and how HOAs will be approached through an organized system. Similarly, council will need to consider how an opt-out program should work, and how the associated fees should be handled, if the city moves towards the contracted program. Lastly, the city may consider how an organized system might impact the current preferred hauler program in the Wheat Ridge Sustainable Neighborhoods. All of these topics can be laid out in more detail should council be interested in moving forward on a specific strategy. I've included them in this presentation because these topics did come up in the peer city research, but we can bring back more information on these considerations should council provide direction. So at this time, we are looking for direction from council regarding your interest in moving forward on a specific organized waste strategy, and a few of us are now available for questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Kayla. Good presentation. So we'll take questions from council. Start with Ms. Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the information that was presented in our council action packet, or our council information packet, was massive, a lot of information. And I really appreciate all that hard work that went into it. After reading through all this information, and through all of the considerations, and through the different types of strategies, I personally feel that I would be okay with moving down the road in the process of hiring a consultant, potentially utilizing our Sustainable Neighborhoods and our Sustainable Wheat Ridge program to help with some of the public engagement and outreach, and moving more towards something where we could find some information to move towards a ballot initiative. You know, in the packet, it says, you know, consultants can range anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000, and you figure that, plus, you know, the stuff that we already currently have that could help with that, and maybe another potential part-timer, it looks like it'd be, you know, possibly less than $100,000 to kind of engage into this process and to get us to a good place where we can go and ask our community what they think about it, and I'm totally down spending that kind of money to do this. One thing I do want to be really clear about where I stand with this is whatever goes on the ballot, the language cannot and should not be three lines. So it needs to be more information so people know what they're voting on, and if they're, you know, if they're voting to opt, if they're voting yes because they're okay with paying $5 to opt out, then, you know, then that should be clear enough, I think, in that, and so part of that, some of that research and that information needs to get done. Another thing that I would be okay with also would be moving to an opt-in preferred hauler system, and so if that's maybe something where we start doing the engagement, and we move down the road, and in a year, we go, well, maybe we'll try this opt-in preferred hauler system, and see how many people actually opt into it, will also give us an opportunity to gather some information and take some temperatures. While I understand it doesn't necessarily mitigate the traffic and environmental concerns unless we get a large amount of people in it, but honestly, if it's a good enough deal, then I think that we probably would get enough people in it. So thanks for your presentation, and that's kind of the direction I was, I'm thinking about going.
Counselor Rolltine.
Thank you. Okay, this is on, so first of all, that presentation, Kayla, just deeply reminded me why I'm really sad that we are no longer going to have you as part of our city. You've just done extraordinary things in your short time here, and lucky Louisville, sad Wheat Ridge. Then I also just, your presentation just reinforced something that I know, but when I see it, you know, Sustainable Wheat Ridge is making a gigantic impact, positive impact on our community, and I just want to thank them for the waste diversion activities that they do, and seeing the numbers. It's been a night of numbers. I'm going to have weird dreams tonight, so I just want to thank everyone for all those efforts. You know, I brought this forward because, you know, like we heard tonight, I'm not a huge fan of all the trash trucks going down my street, and I'm not a huge fan of the visual pollution of all the trash bins out, and, but increasingly, I'm really concerned about like the impact on the environment from greenhouse gas emissions. It's the largest contributor, transportation is the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and increasingly, like a price that we're paying in a lot of other areas. But that's my personal interest, and I'm, you know, in a privileged situation where I get to sit up here and care about that, and make all of us talk about it, you know, with the consensus. But I think to what Ms. Hoppe said, you know, with the depth of the presentation that we got tonight, I think it's imperative that we understand better what our community wants and supports, especially when we're seeing that the ballot initiatives are particularly difficult to pass. So I strongly support that we move forward with, you know, a good, robust community engagement process so that we can better understand our community's preferences around waste diversion, and what motivates them to want to address this, and what kind of outcomes they want, because at the end of the day, we need their strong buy-in for it to support actions that we take. So I would also support engaging a consultant to work alongside the programs we have, like through Let's Talk and Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and we have really good, robust communication infrastructure, because the city's done a good job in the last few years on that. So I'm hoping it's not a four-year process for us, because every year counts in that effort, but I think, you know, I'm even hesitant to, I mean, again, I've got my favorites in here, but I'm even hesitant to say what mine are, because at the end of the day, we just, we're going to really need to know what our community wants. I'm encouraged by the numbers that we've seen in the community survey, and so something that, when I was talking with Ms. Hoppe earlier today, you know, over half of our community has turned over since the last time we voted on this, so we need to remember, we have a bunch of freshies with, you know, different priorities and different perspectives in our community. So, you know, a failed ballot initiative over 10 years ago is not necessarily an indicator of success today, but the indicator of success is going to be community engagement and understanding what they want. So I'm excited to get that started, and I understand it's going to take time to do it right, but we should do it right, and I am looking forward to finding out what my neighbors want, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, and thank you, Kayla, for that really great presentation. I agree with everything that's been said by the other counselors. My concern is that I don't want Sustainable Wheat Ridge to become just a committee around trash and around hauling, because there are many other priorities that we have in Sustainable Wheat Ridge, which was also shown in the 21/21 survey, and actually, trash was not as high as some of the other things, like energy efficiency and a few other things that also significantly contribute to greenhouse gas and all the other things we've been talking about. And so while I would like to move forward, I think I feel much more strongly, rather than trying to move towards a ballot initiative, of what Ms. Hoppe suggested towards what's an opt-in process that could happen in a slightly longer term, hopefully not as long as four years, but I am concerned about the entire position of the Sustainability Coordinator being pulled towards single hauler trash, and that's not, I don't think that was the original intent of our Sustainability Coordinator. So while I agree with moving ahead and understanding what our constituents want, I'd like us to be very aware that there are lots of other pieces of sustainability that are equally as important, and in fact, residents have said are more important than this particular issue. Well, I do agree that, yes, it does contribute to the bottom line of sustainability in many different ways. I just, I would hate to have us change all sustainability to the single hauler trash concept over the next few years of this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Kayla, thank you. And, you know, I've gotten a chance to sit and talk a little bit at various things, and I think you do a great job, as well as our Sustainable Applewood and Paramount Heights and Sustainable Wheat Ridge in general, but in my neighborhood, Sustainable Applewood has done a fantastic job of getting out and getting the preferred trash hauler system going, and that's something that my wife and I opted into a few months ago, because it saves us money, it gives us options as far as recycling and different things like that, that we didn't have with our previous trash haulers. So I agree with Ms. Hoppe. I think moving forward, getting more information from what our citizens want is a big deal. Looking at 12 years ago, the ballot initiative that failed, you know, that ballot initiative didn't give you a whole lot of information, right? It just said, should we do this? It doesn't say how much it's going to cost, it doesn't, you know, whatever it is. So I want to know more information, because, you know, three years ago, going into running for this office, I would have said, no way, no how, I don't think the citizens would want that, but as I hear feedback from our residents, specifically in District Three, this is something that they want to see, and certainly, they want to see us moving forward towards some sort of organized system. You know, right now, we have kind of Wild, Wild West, free-for-all, there's a trash truck every five minutes coming down your street. You know, I don't personally want to see this council, or any council, making that decision for all the residents in Wheat Ridge. I think that that should definitely either go on the ballot, or it should be something that you can opt into, but I do want to know what they want, and I want to know what they want to see, maybe not, you know, in the short term, but what they want to see in the long term as an end result. So I definitely would like to support us moving forward with consultants and having Sustainable Wheat Ridge and everybody jumping in to get that information, and then whatever that timeline is, but I'd be interested to see what that turns into. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the direction this conversation has gone in. I think that if we want to impose a single hauler trash, that it should be going to a vote of the people, and because I was around during, 10 years ago, during the initial ballot matter, and having known kind of the issue in Arvada recently, this has the potential to be an incredibly divisive topic, and I really appreciate that we, at least those who have spoken, agree that we need to engage the public and have a robust outreach program, and I think that we have really come to be respected for that in our community. I think that we have done a wonderful job at engaging the public, including with the Sustainable Neighborhoods, and I appreciate that the preferred hauler has kind of grown organically out of that in some of the neighborhoods, and we may see it go in that direction. And so I agree that we should either invest in a process for engaging the public and continuing this conversation and seeing what happens, and then I agree that if we move in the direction of a single hauler, that it should be a ballot initiative and a much better detailed one at that. And Kayla, sad to see you go, you have done a wonderful job, and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck.
Counselor Dozeman took everything right out of my mouth, including the piece about Kayla, so ditto.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for this presentation. I do have a question about the opt-out fees, like Arvada is imposing. Do you know where that money goes? What's that for? The opt-out fee?
I'm not exactly sure. I just know that there are differences in fees, so when the initial RFP is created and a hauler bids certain costs for services, they bid those costs with the assumption that, you know, everyone, all of the residents, or all of the addresses that are eligible for the program, will participate. And so different cities have different pricing structures for the opt-out fees. Arvada keeps it low at about $5, but they have seen lower participation rates at about, I think the presentation said 63% currently, whereas Golden has a higher opt-out fee. They actually They actually charge their lowest cost of services per month for their opt-out fee and then they see a higher participation in the program. And so I'm not sure how those fees are divided. Likely, some of the funds would go to subsidize the cost of the services for residents. And then I also know that in those situations, that residents do have access to some services, such as the community events and the pickups, but I do know that there is variation in those opt-out fees with other cities.
And so with that type of a program, then, what do I want to say? It's kind of like, you can pick whatever company you want to go to, but you're paying really a penalty for that, right? And then when I see that, you know, in Applewood area where you've got the opt-in system, 10% of people are participating, that's not very many people. So I do support having this be a ballot issue, more information with the community, getting them involved as what all of those systems are, and also where the money goes. Like even with the extra licensing, they already, the trash companies already have a business license and now they need to have more licensing, which would affect rates, you know? So what is that for? All that kind of information is what people want. And also, I do know that there are some alleys that are in District 1 and Edgewater has alleys in the whole city. Drive down some alleys and see what's in the alleys. Trash cans get all mixed up. There's things that are still left there because they only pick up what's in just the can and that's it. And then they mix the cans around and things like that. So that is also, there aren't alleys like west in Wheat Ridge, but there are east and that is an issue. And what are people supposed to do if they have a large yard and you can only put things in the trash can and you've got a lot of branches and things like that? What are you supposed to do with them? Do you have to own a truck to take them somewhere? I mean, these are issues that people will have. Not everybody has a trash can this big, you know? So there's a lot of stuff that goes into it, you know? How do you get rid of the stuff? Even with the leaves, okay? I have a question about that. You need to have them in the paper bags, right? Well, to me, that's spending more money. How is that sustainable? If you have leaf pickup, why don't you have big trucks where that people can just dump the leaves in? Because when people use the leaves for their gardens, they just dump the stuff in their garden without having to buy those kind of bags and things. So it's very complex. Valid issue. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. I would prefer that if we're going to go seek out community input on what they would like this to look like, I'd be really hesitant for us to take on any, you know, regulatory or preferred hauler because if that ended up negatively increasing prices or service or the perception of the city's ability to manage it, it would take away, I think, the options of what might be feasible based on citizen input. So I'd be hesitant for us to invest in any significant changes without first getting some direction from our citizens on what they would want because we could really skew their perception of, you know, what's possible through good outreach. Another thing that comes up is, I guess, trying to better understand how staffing would work through this and what our staffing needs would be. We are about to lose our most valuable staff member for this program. And, you know, Kayla is doing a lot, her position does a lot, and Sustainable Wheat Ridge, since I've been fortunate enough to attend the last couple of meetings, they are touching on a lot of things outside of this. Do you have a sense of how much of staff time it would take to go through the community engagement and then once we find out what that is, to go through, you know, the more in-depth process of bringing forward an informed ballot initiative?
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends on timing. You know, our Let's Talk program is still in full swing and that's going to be another good year or so, right, before we get through all the neighborhoods. But that program was created so that once we get through a majority of the neighborhoods or all the neighborhoods, that that staff is freed up a little bit to do more community engagement, at least Ashley Holland, Jeff may be doing other things. But so today, again, based on what we've heard, you don't want your full-time sustainability coordinator, I think they would be taking all their time to work on this. So I think it needs to be really consultant-driven with assistance probably from the sustainability coordinator and my office. But, you know, I think we could do a pretty good community engagement process in 12 to 24 months, depending on what else is on our plate, which we have a lot on our plate right now. So this was not in your sustaining, this was not in your strategic plan, keep in mind. And you gave us eight priorities there to work on, so.
So if I'm hearing correctly, if we hire a consultant, then when we have Kayla too on staff, that that position would be able to continue to do other work around sustainability?
I think so, to do the initial outreach to community engagement. You know, it's not a full-time thing, you know, with the surveys and different events and, yeah, I think it could be managed with a consultant and our sustainability coordinator.
Okay, okay. And something I just want to reiterate, that, you know, when Montana, our first speaker was talking tonight and she was talking about watching the trucks coming down and like, you know, skipping eight houses and then going, you know, down another seven houses. And, you know, we are paying over $4 a gallon right now for gas and diesel is over $5. And so when we're looking at cost efficiency, you know, I hope gas prices go down, but, you know, looking at the resource of fuel, you know, I think there's probably, we're going to be seeing increases in our waste managed costs as individual households. So I think this is timely and we're probably going to have some pretty motivated residents who want to see, you know, some more cost efficiency on that. So if we can, if we think we could do the process in less than four years, I think that would be good. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my fellow council members. On my one block that I live on, it's only like a little half circle with 10 houses. At one time, probably five, seven years ago, we had four haulers, which is a lot for 10 houses. What's happened now that's changed is that the two businesses got bought up by the bigger fish and the prices have gone up. I kind of feel like we're in a better position to ask for this than we were, you know, when the ballot went on because before, there were so many little haulers that maybe it was more competitive. And, but there's still traffic, you know? There's still, I still see damage on the curbs from a lot of these haulers. The one question I did have is how many years are the contracts for when, if you do a city contracted hauler?
Typically, cities rebid every five years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, actually, I've got Counselor Hoppey and then Counselor Weaver.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, one of the things that I wanted to just clarify is we fill it between a consultant and potentially Let's Talk staff, so Ashley Holland, and some time from a full-time sustainable coordinator, that we could do some outreach without our sustainability coordinator being only focused on just trash.
I think so. I mean, outreach, yeah. I don't think we're saying get it to a full ballot and approval, but yeah, initial outreach, I think.
Well, I mean, a coordinator probably would be doing a lot of that heavy lift to get it to the ballot though, right?
Likely, the coordinator would probably manage that piece of it.
Or contractor, sorry.
What's helpful, I think, with the consultants is that they'll come in and with their research and their modeling, they will, you know, put together proposed strategies and kind of a plan for action. And so I think it would be more organized in that sense and I think it'd be a more efficient process for staff.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still on the, you know, we should utilize some of the resources that we already have, like with our community development department and resources that may be opening up in the next year also. And I, you know, I'm still in the, I think that we need to gather information for whoever takes over for Kayla, good luck in your next place, that, you know, we should give them the direction that this is important and we want to see it move in forward, but it's not the only thing you have going on. And I think that that's a good direction that we can give.
Counselor Weaver.
I would just like to add that whatever research we do, we also consider our multifamily buildings because those typically aren't offered recycling and they're large dumpsters and that's also part of our rat problem in Wheat Ridge, since I live around several of the multifamily housing. And it's often not part of these systems. So if we can put some research in, and Kayla, if you have a comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
I do. It's interesting that you bring that up. The same Colorado state law that protects a resident's right to choose their waste hauler does also limit a city's right to mandate trash haulers for residences that are seven units or less, so multifamily would not be included in a city organized system.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Would that be the same for HOAs and things like that?
So HOAs are another, kind of another different topic. HOAs could be, so single-family HOAs could be included in a city organized system. However, HOAs typically have bargaining power already since they, you know, have that collective bargaining. So they're usually less incentivized to want to join a program. They usually see lower rates already for their trash and recycling services. So that's something that would require additional research. But some cities have chosen to include HOAs in their original RFP and system. Some cities have chosen to leave out HOAs or to give a certain number of years for HOAs to kind of join the program after five or so years. So there's a variety of different strategies on HOAs and that's kind of one of those rabbit hole considerations that I think we'd need additional research on should we be interested in moving forward with the HOA topic.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. What about businesses and what about the hospital?
So those, like multifamily, would not be included in a city contracted system.
Thank you. We've had a lot of good discussion. Every, all of the councilors had a chance to speak. Do you need any more? Or Counselor Hulteen is here. I was not going to try to formulate a consensus.
Yeah, are we ready for a consensus? Okay, all right. I'd like to ask for a consensus for staff to come back to council with a consultant proposal and an outreach strategy. Does that sound like a good thing? All right. So that we can better understand from our community what they would like to see for our managed waste. And I'll just add in a timeline that works alongside hiring Kayla too.
Okay. Kayla, thank you very much. Good discussion. Mary Ann, always great to have you here. Kayla, I want to say that we wish you great luck and great success in your next venture. We're sorry to see you go. It's been great to have you here and you've really taken our, a good start in our Sustainable Wheat Ridge efforts and really moved it to the next level. So thank you so much.
Thank you and thank you to all of you. I've really enjoyed working with all of you and thank you for the well wishes.
Okay, that concludes our second agenda item. We will go now to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just very quickly, there is, some work is starting on the I-70 bridge over 32nd Avenue. Starting tonight, 32nd Avenue is going to be fully closed from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM through the 7th, April 7th. So detours will be routed down to 40th Avenue. So they're actually going to start demolishing the easternly portion of the west, of the, during demolition, of the easterly portion of the westbound I-70 bridge. Does that sound right? This is from CDOT, so the Wheat Ridge side. There you go. It's the eastbound. So heads up for anybody that's listening on that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will go now to elected officials' reports. I'm happy to note our treasure. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. Miller, anything tonight for our viewing audience? Okay, thank you. And I will go to our clerk, Kirk Patrick.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wake up back there, okay? And anything from our councilors? Raise your hand and I'll call you on you, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I was contacted regarding a traffic situation, okay? And gave the link to the new police community deal or whatever. So he went to use it and he said nothing came up.
Okay, so maybe a link that we need some, some adjustment to?
Is this on that neighborhood speeding, neighborhood speeding issue?
Right, it's on your mayor's matters.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for letting us know. We'll check into that.
So I didn't try it or anything.
Okay.
Then I have a second issue. I was walking my dog today and we go down 38th Avenue and I've seen two seniors. They're on their little carts, okay? One of them was going on like where the cars park on the south side of 38, all right, going against traffic. And I said, would you like to get on the sidewalk? She's like, no, I don't want to do that. Okay, so she's riding in the street. Then the other person was from the senior, the high-rise, right, over by Christopher House. And that construction project is going on over there at 6230, 38th Avenue. How long is that going to keep going? Because they've closed the sidewalk and it's been closed. I've seen the fence down 11 times. And this fellow was on one of those riding carts. He goes out into the road and he's traveling down the turn lane on 38th Avenue, okay? Because he can't go to the sidewalk or whatever. And then he finally goes across 38th Avenue. This construction site's been going on for two years and I'm just wondering, when is it going to be done? And can they totally shut off a public sidewalk?
Yeah, Mayor and I were speaking about that this morning, weren't we? It looks like they've started again. I don't have an update on the status of the project, but I will, I'll get one and send you an email. And I believe they can close sidewalks, but they have to provide an alternate route. So if they haven't done that, we'll all look into that.
It's a street.
Yeah, I noticed the fence was down the other day too, so we'll get on that.
Okay. Good. Counselor Nosler Beck.
I had a call from a constituent today who was asking about a program, I guess, that used to exist and they thought it was a city program that helped residents with cleaning up their yards. Does anybody know about that or was it potentially a local works thing or?
It was a Little Help, which is a nonprofit that is now located in Jepco. So they can reach out to them. A Little Help, they do organized, like, light household things and yard work for seniors.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And then I provided a bit of an update on our March 15th education meeting. We also have a couple of requests outside of what I had brought up earlier from this group, just for some marketing dollars with that education funding. So Patrick, I'll talk to you directly about that. And happy birthday, Janice.
Okay. Yeah. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and happy birthday, Janice. Thanks for being here with us tonight. A couple of things. Councilmember Ohm and I are hosting a District 2 meeting on the 16th and it is at 3:00 PM. Is that correct? And Randall Park, sorry, we talked about a bunch of things. So 3 o'clock on the 16th at Randall Park.
So, 3 o'clock on the 16th at Randall Park, District 2 meeting, and we are hoping for good weather, but we hope people will come by, and we'd love to hear from you and hear what's important to you in the city. We'll certainly talk about some things like Wadsworth. Speaking of Wadsworth, wow, like chunks of it, like literally, you drive down and see chunks of it going away. It is amazing how much progress they've made in the last couple of weeks. So, the rest of this, I'm looking at my peers. I have to pivot this way. So, Earth Day is this month, and I would like to challenge all of us to not bring any plastic water bottles to council this month. So, please find your favorite one of these. And I'm going to ask, if you bring a plastic water bottle to council, you have to throw a dollar in, and we will give those dollars to someone who needs them in the community. But, so I'm doing a no plastic bottle water challenge for Earth Day month. So, I'm going to be looking at you guys, water bottles of shame. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at you. Anyway, that's it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other elected officials' matters? Counselor Ohm?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the committee. I know Kelly Blin and Mark Delatorre and Pro Tem Mayor Hulteen have put in a lot of work for that committee, and appreciate all their help. I know a lot of times, some of the committees don't, they don't get enough applause or thanks, and I'm saying thank you to our members. And really, thanks to the staff, too, for those two reports that we saw tonight. That was a lot of information, but I was able to, you know, look through and digest it, and very well-written, a lot of time and effort were put into that. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional elected officials' matters? All right, thank you all for being here tonight. We will be back here in regular session at 7:00 p.m. on next Monday night. So, if there's no more business, we will stand adjourned. Please drive safely through our city.